Good afternoon and welcome to the May meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and open the meeting and call it to order. You all should have received minutes from the last meeting. Are there any edits or comments or corrections that need to be made? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We can do it this way now. That's great. So we'll go on to our first bit of business then. Amelia, could you go over that, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Thompson and members of commission are thankful to be able to be in person again and see everybody's faces. The first application we have today is 25H005 at 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Holland Fletcher is the applicant requesting to remove an existing front corner porch and two windows and replace the driveway and existing single-family residence. The property is located in the west side of Middle Tennessee Boulevard, north of East Main Street and adjacent property to the north is the MTSU Alumni House. The property is approximately .5 acres and is developed with a single-family dwelling. The brick Tudor House was built in 1932. The property is owned RS10 district with East Main Street Historic District and a CCO overlay district. The applicant is requesting to make some modifications on the property, first being replace the front corner, front porch door and two adjacent windows with new infield stucco siding panels to match the existing home's stucco board and batten system. A new driveway replacing existing asphalt drive with clear seal over a broom finish concrete edged with red brick soldier and including an entrance of red brick herringbone or running bond. Mr. Holland Fletcher is available in attendance today in order to answer any questions the commissions may have regarding this request.
If you would come up to the podium and state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Fletcher Holland and I'm here to represent the Davises of 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Thank you for having me.
If you want to review the work again once more, just in case there's something else that we didn't include.
Yes, so to start, we're looking at renovating the driveway and replacing the asphalt with a concrete driveway. So it's in need of a little bit of repair and so that's the major project that we're going to undertake. There's a good picture of it there. So it will, the entrance there that you see coming off the Middle Tennessee Boulevard sidewalk will have either a running bond or herringbone stamped concrete overlay up about 20 or so feet and then from there just concrete main field with a soldier coursing around the perimeter of that whole driveway.
And then there's the port, the filled-in porch modifications?
Yes, that picture up. So the, the front porch was converted years ago to an office space. It's now been converted to an interior closet and so we are going to, we propose to eliminate those doors and windows with just the board and batten stucco siding that matches the rest of the house to close that in.
I went by the house just so I, I have never been to the house. I wanted to make sure where this window assembly is and then it's really those two windows to the right is the other 90-degree side.
That's right.
So it faces the driveway.
That's correct.
And it's hardly visible.
It is. It's kind of tucked in behind a little wing wall as well, so.
Okay. What questions does the commission have of the applicant? And I would say, do you want to recuse yourself since, if you would for the record, he's going to recuse himself for the vote. What questions does the commission have of the applicant? What other, I'll go ahead and jump in. There's a sidewalk leading to that door. Do you plan to leave the sidewalk? Because there won't be any really need for. You could do landscaping then in front of that assembly.
There's a little bit of a stoop there, but yeah, landscape will be right there around it. Our driveway will also marry up to that step area as well, so it'll just remain as is with landscape beds area.
So the little sidewalk that leads to that door is going to stay?
For now, that's, that's correct.
Do you plan to add any landscaping to help disguise this change?
Uh, that's.
Any taller landscaping than just a bush?
That's always to be, you know, discussed later as we finish up the project, but I'm sure we can add, add plantings there if necessary.
In some respects, it looks like a garage door, the way it's designed. No disrespect, but it sort of looks like a garage door.
It follows the trend of the, the rest of the house, so.
So it matches the stucco panels in the front there that we're seeing now?
Yes, sir. It would match and along with the carriage house that's built on the back of the property.
Is this like a hardy plank, a hardy board, stucco finish?
This would be a cement board finish.
Is it, is the existing stucco rough or smooth?
It is a stipple finish. So it matches pretty, with the last project.
So it'd be similar to a stipple finish?
Yes, sir.
I think because it faces the driveway, you really can't see it. You have to look really quick and.
That's right.
It's just not that obvious. Had it been on the front of the house, I would have had a little heartburn, but you don't really see it.
We might have done something differently.
What questions? Does anybody have?
None.
I think we can group this in both together. I don't see a reason to separate them like we have in other cases. The Chair would welcome a motion then regarding both of these items for this particular property.
I'll make a motion that we approve as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it is accepted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. What is our second bit of business then?
Our second item on the agenda is file H21006 at 1008 East Main Street. Joseph and Catherine Reeves are the applicants, requesting review of a new aluminum fence for an existing single-family residence. This property is located on the south side of East Main Street, east of First Street and west of Second Avenue. The property contains approximately .32 acres and is developed with a single-family dwelling. It is a ranch-style home that was built in 1942. The property is zoned RS10 and HI Historical Zone and is located in the CCO District. The applicant wishes to erect a four-foot tall decorative aluminum fence attached near the rear of the home, on the side of a patio, on the east side of the dwelling unit and extend adjacent to the western side of the, of the driveway. You can't see it in this photograph, but there is a storage building right here and then back here, there is an existing wooden fence. So he's just going to extend it to this portion of the, the fence, to the, to the storage building. And then this fence is an existing chain-link fence for this property here. He is going to connect it from the west side of his home back to that chain-link fence. From going out and looking at the property, the best location that I would feel it would even be visible is from about right on Main Street, looking back at the property. This is the type of fence that he desires to use. There is another fence similar to this, adjacent to his property. This is looking down his driveway. When you look at thi, this is the screened-in porch. These bushes are actually in front of this screened-in porch and then the fence will attach off the back of that porch. So visibility from the road, when he comes across this drive area right here, you might be able to see it in this location. From what I was able to observe, however, connecting back to this building, you're not going to see it and then along the edge over here with the chain-link fence and along the backside of the home on this side, it will not be visible. The chain-link photo that I have was a black and white, so he got extra photos, if y'all pass those around, of the type of fence that will be installed in the rear of the home. The design guidelines for the Historic District state that fences may be added to a lot if they're similar to materials to other fences and structures in the vicinity and that they're constructed so as not to disrupt the harmony of the front of the lot. And in addition, the preferred type of fencing is formal wrought iron, wood and brick. Mr. Reeves is available in attendance today in order to answer any questions that the commission may have regarding this request.
If you would like to come to the podium then and state your name and address.
My name is Joe Reeves and I'm one of the applicants and we want to build a fence as described by Amelia. And frankly, the reason I want to do it and my wife agrees is that we have a new dog.
I think it had to be a dog.
And he.
Grandchildren.
Yeah, and he, so that's the reason he'll, he's an expert in getting out of the door before you realize. And I've had to chase him around the lot and after five or 10 minutes, he gives up. And I'm getting older and it's harder for me to do that. And I would say that the fences, as you all have noted, it's, it's consistent with the type of fences you see downtown. I walked between our house and I think the intersection of East Main and Highland and I saw like half dozen fences that if you look back, you could see them. They're black, aluminum or iron, iron fences. So it's, it's harmonious with the other fences that are in the area, I think.
What questions does the commission have of the applicant?
I see you have parking there. I'm assuming that you are not blocking your current parking turnaround area.
No, it's going to curve along the.
Curve and go back there.
The edge of the driveway. There, there are bricks and stone that set it off, so it would be right behind those.
Gotcha. Okay.
There was no discussion of gates in this fence. I'm assuming you're going to have to have some gates to get in and out.
Yeah, I think the contract calls for two gates. It was in the application.
I'd like for the minutes and the record to indicate that there's two gates because if they go out to inspect it and there's gates there, they may say, hey, what happened?
Yeah.
I wouldn't think they would, but I'd like for it to reflect it because all we know is that there's a fence.
Yeah. Yeah, there are two pathways that go back into the heart of the back area and the gates will be at the entrance to those patio, those sidewalks.
Any additional questions or comments? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to accept the motion or accept the project.
A move that we approve and as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I would like to add to the people out in TV land watching this that wrought iron, brick and wood are approved items. You cannot add a new chain-link fence, but if a tree falls on it or something happens to it, you can put chain-link back, but you cannot just add a new run of fence that's chain-linked. So that will be denied every time it comes up.
You mentioned two fences that back there now.
Yeah. And if, if it's on your property and a tree falls on it, you could replace it with chain-link. I just wanted to make that clear that we just don't approve it, but we allow it to be repaired. And then it could be replaced if you wanted to with the wood, the brick or the wrought iron. I believe we have a new, additional bit of business.
We do have some other business. We have a gentleman, Mr. Trey Lee with us today. He is the Super Assistant Superintendent of Engineering and Construction with the Rutherford County Schools. He is here to give you all some information and inform you of a project that is to be taking place at Central Magnet School in the summer.
Please, if you come forward and again, state your name and your address.
I'm Trey Lee. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Engineering and Construction for Rutherford County School. I reside at 725 Williamsburg Drive in Smyrna. We are, as everyone knows, Rutherford County is a destination county and we continue to be such. One of the things that brings a lot of people to us is our school system. Central Magnet is actually one of our more prestigious schools. We have a number of prestigious schools, but Central Magnet is one of those. It's in the, one of the tops in the country and they are continuing to try and accommodate our youth with the best education possible in public education, which being purpose, purposely biased, I think we do a very good job. But as that comes to fruition, we have issues where we have to expand our curriculum. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of options at Central. We're committed to staying there and we are completing this year, in fact, by the end of the school year, a complete renovation of the original 1930-ish HVAC and cooling system. So we're committed to staying there and keeping the Magnet School there. But that being said, we do have a need to add some additional curriculum at this time. We are about 50% at this point, fairly certain that this is going to move forward. That being said, we need to, we do not wish to expand the buildings based on their historical nature and those kind of things and curriculum may change. But we are, we have met with staff, with the planning department. We've offered to add a few things. We're proposing to add temporarily a couple of portables, trailers on the Lidle Street side. I'm not real sure how this works.
See if we can get.
There we go. They would be in this location here. There are a couple of large trees there. At one time, there was a number of trees and disease and lightning has taken a lot of these trees out. There's an extensive gap here along the Lidle Street side. And one of the things that we discussed with staff when we were over there is that we would like to put two portables here, maintain the 42-foot setback. Typically, our portables are off-white, beigeish color. We don't feel like that would fit in this area. We, we're understand the historical nature of the area and want to be good neighbors. So we're proposing to color match as best we can these portables to the brick. We're proposing on the, let me back out of this just a little. I may back completely out and have to get back in it. We are proposing to place these portables here, which we would add some mulched landscape area on the end so that you're not looking at the bare open end of a portable there. And then we do not know what species. I'm going to leave that up to the fine folks in the planning department, but we're proposing to add some permanent six, five to six trees along this end. Oaks, maples, you know, whatever they think would be appropriate for the area to fill in this gap. That would be permanent. It would also help create a buffer. But when we remove these trailers, the trees would stay and they would be a permanent benefit to the, to the campus and also to the area. We have sent out a mailer this week to all the residents on the Lidle Street side, letting them know that we are coming up here today to talk to you folks about this and that it's coming. And we'll have all new, this, I'm going to show you, of course, everybody's familiar with the fine portables. This, this would be a typical portable coloration, but there again, we're going to pressure wash them and paint them to blend in with the building so that they're not an eyesore. We would.
There's a picture on there. If you want to go down to the very bottom one on the left that shows the actual paint color that you had given us.
There. Red, reddened earth is what we believe is fairly consistent. That, that is a multi-colored reddish brown brick on the side. It's not a one-color brick. We do have two distinct additions. Mr. Thompson and I have a history years ago of trying to match bricks from multiple projects that are on the same building. But anyway, we think this brick would go best with that area of the building. Anyway, we are here today just to bring you folks up to speed and see if there's any questions or any additional things that we can do to work with you folks.
I'll ask this of you. I've worked with him on the motherhouse in Nashville. Should I recuse myself? I don't plan, I can do it, but conduct it, but not vote.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, this is a good time for me to bring it up. The reason that it's coming to you now, it's not, it's not actually within the commission's purview to vote.
Okay.
On these changes. They are under, I think it's subsection I of the Historic District. Public properties can bring you their plans and proposals for your review and comment period on, but it's an information-only item, so there, there's no vote. So I see no need in this case to recuse yourself from, from any comment period either.
Okay, thank you. What questions does the commission have of the school district or Mr. Lee?
Well, I was curious as to since this looks like this curriculum is going to be permanent, why we're not going with a permanent building extension on that Lidle side of the property?
There is a potential down the road that we could, but we're not, our curriculum changes and we're not confident that we're going to go that with a Magnet School. We're able to control the enrollment a little differently than we do with our regular schools. With a regular school, in your zone for that school, they just keep coming. With the Magnet School, their enrollment can be capped at a certain level and that's basically where we are now. This is for an additional curriculum. Curriculum changes somewhat over time. Your basic math, science, those type things remain. They evolve over time and change, but they remain. We're, we're not looking to expand the enrollment. The, the main problem with expanding the enrollment, we don't have enough property over there for the parking. We did a parking addition over there a few years back just so we could get the current enrollment off the grass and off the street onto a paved surface because it was tearing up the yard and we were also parked in, it was basically, they were parking on the street all the way around the building. So property-wise, it does not benefit us to add on because we don't have enough property for parking. So we're trying to keep that enrollment the same. This is for a certain curriculum. If this curriculum is to maintain, then we will figure out a way to move it into the building and move the portables out.
Could I ask what the curriculum is that you're adding?
I was afraid you were going to ask that and unfortunately, I'm engineering and construction.
If you're not going to add more students.
We're not, no ma'am. We had, I had that discussion.
You can't say, huh?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I had that discussion with Mr. Spurlock today prior to coming over here. He was a little hesitant in even bringing it at this point, but based on the way we move and it's, we're at the end of the school year and this last year for everybody in education has been a trying, parents too. It's been a trying year. We're kind of on a short timeframe this year on what we're going to try and implement this summer. So I elected to come on today to let you know what we were looking at and I'm being totally transparent. There's a 50% chance that we don't go down this road. But if we do, I don't want to wait till that time period because we wouldn't be able to get ready in time for the school year.
Yeah.
And that was why we elected to come on today.
What other questions does, does the commission have?
There is a, pardon me, there's an existing portable storage shed near this location.
Yes, sir.
Is the paint of the two going to match? I feel like it's maybe a red brick sort of color.
It's a, it, it's whatever the storage building company sent us. That was one of their standard colors. It's not a custom color. It's not large enough that if I'm over there painting this, if y'all want to, I don't mind painting it the same color to make it all go together. It's, it's more of a bright, brighter red.
Okay.
Less brownish.
I was curious if it would stay and.
Yes, if, the intent is for it to stay and if y'all would like, it's not that big a deal. I'll go ahead and paint it while we're there.
Seems like fewer color variations.
You paint them all the same color.
Okay, we can do that.
So there's less variety on campus that makes it jarring and looks like Dickerson Road in Nashville.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
What other comments? I wondered too about those new trees, the six trees. Are those going, you, you mentioned trees that were deciduous. Said you thought about evergreen trees that might help year-round disguise it better?
I'm going to leave that to the, the gentleman sitting over here and what, and we've agreed, six trees of certain caliper, whatever, that, that, I, I don't have a specific species. If, if they have, we're going to leave it up to the, to those kind of guys, those guys to make.
If you would state your name and address, that would be great.
Greg McKnight, Director of Planning, 1163 Ethica Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Chairman Thompson, we did get with Brad Barbie, who would work with the landscaping and he did state that evergreen trees would probably be a preference and he would work with Trey and Trey agreed to work with him as well.
I think an evergreen would really help disguise it more so year-round. Well, there'll be an, and one of the photographs showed an elevated wooden sidewalk to get into it.
Yes, we have to do that for ADA purpose.
Yes, and so there'll be a continuous to the last door, the last portable or whatever.
Typically, it depends on the portable that lands there and once we get it orientated, whether the door's closer or further back. There are exit doors on the opposite side which they will have to be small stoops with steps.
Yeah.
But we will keep that ramp between the portables as best we can and if we can, that's fairly flat back there, so I don't see them being very high. So if we can keep them as low to the ground, which we do anyway, because if anybody's bought any lumber lately.
Yes.
I've got mine under a lock and key for, for our building decks this summer. It's absolutely nuts. So yes, it's in my benefit to keep them as low as possible and keep that ramp. So yes, it's in my benefit to keep them as low as possible and keep that ramp as short as possible.
It shows the walkway, but it didn't show a covering. Will there be a roof to this walkway?
No, sir. We do not.
Okay.
And there's a set of double doors on that end of the building and we're going straight to those double doors so we can shorten the ramp. There's a sidewalk coming out of there now, so we're going to get as close as we can, stay the 42 feet. That way we can get our ramp as short as possible and then we'll hit that sidewalk, go in the back door. But no, sir, no covered walkway.
Any other questions? I think based on that, we are not, we're not going to vote, but I think we all heard what you had to say and I think it sounded good to me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Trey.
Thank you.
Anything else, Amelia?
I believe that has it.
If that is the case, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.